Okay. I now call the City Planning Commission meeting to order for Tuesday, April 15th. Daisy, can you confirm that the Kansas Open Meeting Act has properly been provided?
Yes, I can confirm the packet was posted and the required notice was provided.
All right, roll call, please.
Call Commissioner Seidel.
Here.
Commissioner Van Over.
Here.
Commissioner Alt.
Here.
Commissioner Farber.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Paget.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Sell.
Here.
Chair Waters.
Here.
So we have eight appointed members and all eight are in attendance today. So we have a quorum to discuss comprehensive plans.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any corrections to the March 18th minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 18th meeting.
A second. Has been moved to second to approve the minutes of the March 18th meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on into administrative items.
Don't have any public hearing items, so this is an administrative item. And under the Kansas Planning Zoning Enabling Act, the Planning Commission is supposed to be the custodian of the comprehensive plan so that you would be involved in its development. And the Planning Commission was heavily involved in the development of our current plan that was adopted in 2010. And the state statute says that at least once each year, the Planning Commission so review or reconsider the plan or any part and propose amendments, extensions, or any other suggestions or recommendations they want to make. And so one of the things that we did, and some of this is just building a legacy, not just for the Commission, but for other members of staff, to kind of summarize what has transpired since the 2010 maps and plan was adopted. So the first part of this report is just listing various amendments where we adopted a plan or map and circumstances or conditions changed and the Planning Commission saw fit to recommend it, an amendment or change to the plan. One of the things, and we have it on the screen, and I don't know if we can blow that up at all, Dustin, but this is what is identified as our urban service area. So our comprehensive plan and our land use plan extends outside the current boundaries of the city. And so you can see it extends all the way out to like Simpson Road on the east and out around the airport area. And one of the things that we found was that the plan was presented and all the maps were essentially static maps and they were fixed in the plan document. And one of the things we did was got with the Planning Commission and said, well, we'd really like to take a lot of these maps and customize them and produce them locally so that we can actually change things from time to time and update things. So in 2014 and 15, we created a future land use map that was created in-house and you have that in your packet. We did a street classification map so that someone could look at the map and see whether a street is collector or arterial or local. And then we had at the time a fairly active bicycle pedestrian advisory committee and we worked with the Planning Commission to develop a bicycle master plan, which you have in your packet. And part of that was to look at the existing street network, but part of it was to look at gaps and different things, not just the on-street system, but also look at the levy and opportunities for roadside trails. And one of the things, and we discussed that at a recent meeting, talking about the development out to the west of Menards, but one of the things that was developed, and I don't, maybe you can blow that up a little bit and look at West Magnolia, Dustin. Or is that, so if we zoom, you can see the yellow piece there where they're working on a hike bike path along Magnolia Road between Ninth and Ohio. But one of the things that was identified in the plan was if you're at a student or you're at K-State Salina and you prefer a bicycle as your mode of travel, it's really hard to get from the K-State Salina campus to the rest of the city safely on a bicycle. And so one of the things that the Planning Commission identified as a need for improvement was that Magnolia Road should be a future bicycle route, but that upgrades were needed to make that safe and convenient for bicycling. So as was discussed at a recent meeting, part of the plan for rebuilding Magnolia Road is to make it multimodal and have hike bike paths parallel with Magnolia Road. And part of that is to have a safe route out to the campus. And so those are the types of things that the Planning Commission has been involved with. Those are probably the major pieces, but we have, you might have to back up Dustin, but if you could go to the area of change and the neighborhood revitalization and special redevelopment areas. So these are two maps that are in your packet. The original comprehensive plan has areas of stability, areas of change, and the areas of change are neighborhoods that were identified, that there might be a need for incentives or housing programs or some things to help with the current conditions of properties, particularly residential properties. So if you could go to the next one, Dustin, this, based on that, this map shows what is called our neighborhood revitalization area. So the way that that works is in, whether it's residential or in the green areas, residential and commercial, is that you can apply for a property tax rebate. So you have Habitat Humanity use that program a lot for infill housing, but the way the program works is that you lock in a beginning value. So if you have a $6,000 vacant lot and you build a $125,000 home on it, then for the 10 years, you can get a property tax rebate. So in the first five years you're there, you're essentially paying property taxes if the property was still a vacant lot. And so all the area that's shown there on the map is eligible for rebates. And so the blue area is residential only and the green area is both commercial and residential. And so there's a lot of projects that have been done in Salina, such as the Lee Loffs' Pioneer President's Place, where they took the Roosevelt and Lincoln Middle Schools and turned them into apartment housing. They utilized that rebate program and that was an important part of making their part feasible. So I specifically remember on the Roosevelt-Lincoln project, their base value was $12,000. And when they finished, their assessed value was something just close to $3 million. And so for the first five years, they were paying property taxes if it was still valued at $12,000. So that is, that is an incentive that's available in those areas where there might need to be some incentives to reinvest. The other map that's in your packet, we wanted to show you, the city for years has a special redevelopment area and just within that area, which is essentially north of Iron and State Street, any new construction or additions or rehabilitations in that area, all the building permit fees are waived. So if you, if you built a new warehouse or if you built a truck distribution center within that area, your building permit fees are waived. So that's another area where incentives are offered. I think we had a second bike map that had some of the projects and trail mileages on them, Dustin. The second one there maybe is a little, little easier to read, but this map shows, and it's difficult to read, but in the bottom right corner, it has hike bike trails existing and future, and then it has bike lanes and where marking is complete and not complete. And then it's got the symbol there that requires infrastructure. So out there along West Magnolia Road, they've got the symbol there for requires infrastructure, which is identifying that we'd like to see that as a designated bicycle route, but you really can't encourage it with the road in its current condition. So once, once those improvements are made. But part of this map and part of the role and the input of the Planning Commission was to say where, where should we put our emphasis, what corridor should we look to make more friendly for pedestrians and bicyclists? So that was part of what has transpired. And that was probably one of the biggest changes of the comprehensive plan was the concept of what is referred to as complete streets. And so with a complete street, you're not just looking at the travel lanes and the width and you're also looking at sidewalks, you're looking at hike bike, you're looking at a complete street profile. And so we've seen that done on corridors like South Ohio where we have the hike bike path. And so that's, that's one of the biggest changes. I think also in your packet, we have what we refer to as sub-area plans where there's been a focus on a particular area. I think one that is least known about and is not really taken flight was what's known as the East Salina Master Plan. And it may, it seems doubtful that Homes Road will ever come to that, but just so you can see this, there were kind of three, three things that drove the Planning Commission and City Commission at the time to look at this. And one of them was Salina, City Salina has almost as many sewer pump stations as the city of Wichita does. And part of the reason for that is that Salina has slow incremental growth and relatively small subdivisions, so we kind of plan sewers on a small area basis. So out in this area, the city did a master utility plan and tried to master plan utilities out in this area, specifically sewer, so that we could do it in a way that eliminated the need for sewer pump stations and actually could eliminate a few. The other thing that Salina has quite a few of, if you've reviewed subdivisions, is that a lot of our smaller subdivisions, each of them have their own individual stormwater detention pond. And so when this was looked at by the Planning Commission and City Commission, said, well, instead of having each subdivision have its own pond, why don't we build a regional pond that everybody can send all their water to and then they don't have to have them individually? And so there is an existing livestock pond that's on this property. And so the idea was to have a regional detention area so that you wouldn't have to have individual detention ponds and individual subdivisions. And then the third thing was if you look at the maps, we have the Berkeley Family Recreation Center, but there's really no parks that are east of the Smoky Hill River. And so the idea was to look at stormwater detention, floodplain, and create a park out of an area that you couldn't really develop because of floodplain and water detention. So the thing is that you're sort of master planning property that's owned by multiple different owners. And so this may or may not come to fruition, but it's still part of the plan. And so anybody who comes in to develop this property in the future, which is still undeveloped, it would start by looking at this and seeing how close people want to get to try to carry this plan out. But wanted the Planning Commission to be aware that that's there. And then another sub-area plan that we have, some of you who have been around Salina for a long time, there was almost constant friction between the Salina Regional Health Center and the historic districts that are to the west and south of it. And so I think our next, next map, Dustin, has the, well, it has some of the text, but there's a, there's a map there. So essentially, the, there was an agreement that was reached between representatives of the historic district, between Salina Downtown, Inc., and the Salina Regional Health Center. And the Salina Regional Health Center said, we're going to give up trying to acquire property or expand south of Prescott or going to the west. We're going to look east and we're going to look to the north. And so after this plan was adopted, the Salina Regional Health Center actually acquired quite a bit of property along South Fifth Street and over to the east and have built facilities there. And a lot of the questions about buying up homes or buying and extending south of Prescott have gone away. And so this was just, it's like if you're, if, we want you to expand, we want you to look to expand, but everyone agrees that you should look to the east and tie back in with the downtown and go east towards the water plant. And so that, that was the plan that was adopted. The other thing that the Planning Commission was involved with, we used to do everything at the hospital with a planned development district to try to, so that the neighborhood could have input on things. And so one of the things that was done was a new zoning district called Hospital Medical Zoning District was created. And so there's, you will notice that there's hardly any cases from the hospital that come before the Planning Commission anymore. And that's because basically if you stay in the area that's designated for Hospital Medical, we're going to zone everything for Hospital Medical and you can just build, add on, change, and you don't need to come to the Planning Commission every time you change your plan. So that, that has been pretty successful in terms of giving the flexibility to the hospital to change and adapt and add facilities, which they have done quite a bit. The other thing, and again, this would be something if you've been around Salina a long time, is that the original project they did over at Salina Regional Health Center, they put a helipad on the top of the emergency room on the second floor. And then when it was done, they looked at the engineering for it, they found that it wouldn't support the weight of a helicopter. So then they moved their helicopter landing to a surface area on the ground. And so that was a constant source of complaint for the residents over there on Eighth Street and nearby residents. And there's lots, if you go back and look at the records, there's lots of large Planning Commission meetings where people complaining about the noise and downdraft and flying rocks from the helicopters landing on the ground. Now, to have the helicopter landing up on the roof again, no, no great public hearings or packed meetings. So all of that is, is good in terms of the relationship between the hospital and its neighbors. And then the other map we put in the packet was just what, you could see what the future land use was for West Magnolia Road. And so we've had some changes out there, but you can see that the Menards area is commercial. The area directly south of Menards is still shown as commercial. The frontage along Magnolia is commercial, but the area there is urban residential. The area on the west side of Dry Creek is currently shown as if that might be light industrial, something. I think that's probably up in the air. It's entirely possible that someone may come forward and want to do housing there instead because you see airplanes there to the south, which is under development. You have the apartments, they're going on, they're making quite a bit of progress on, over there west of Menards. And so we may see that come across the creek, but that's what the plan is. And then if you could show the northern part, Dustin, all that area on the north side is on the recent, most recent flood maps, a lot of that is not just floodplain, but it's also floodway. So that may be very difficult to develop and it may just have to remain as open space for the near future. And then we just, we put in there also that we have a couple overlay districts. I think the next thing there, Dustin, is we have a couple things for Broadway. So we, we put in your packet a plan that was done, kind of a future vision master plan for the Broadway corridor, starting at State Street and going south of Crawford. And it was just an idea that maybe it couldn't be retain all of its commercial character that it had before with all commercial and retail. And so it looked at how additional housing could be incorporated into the plan. It also looked at removal of the asphalt medians in the center of Broadway, which have now, for the most part, been removed. And so this plan was never, it was presented to and discussed by the Planning Commission, but it was never adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. And then after that, we're, we've got maps that show you the corridor overlay district for South Ninth Street and the North Ohio corridor overlay. So our presentation was, was pretty heavy on, on maps and just showing you what, what exists today. And then we just provided you some information there because our, our plan is now approaching 15 years old or is 15 years old. I looked at the resolution that adopted the current plan and it had Mr. Mike Sell's name on it and so.
2010.
Yeah, so what goes around, comes around. But what this is laying the groundwork for is it's time for updating that plan. And so probably as we get into summer and fall, there'll be some sessions working with the Planning Commission to try to develop a scope or what we call a request for proposals or qualifications of what, what we want to see or look for in a new comprehensive plan. And so in my time working in Salina, I have worked on the 1990 census, the 2000 census, the 2010 census, and the 2020 census. And the community changes and things change over time based on information you get from the census. There's new things that the legislature's passing all the time. There's things that happen where, we had a period where local industry was expanding and getting workforce housing for those employees. It's important. And then there's things like the downtown streetscape project and the river renewal project that come up that weren't really, we were just starting that in 2010. So there will be an effort to include the Planning Commission in, in getting the scope. And then the process will be a matter of selecting a consultant or getting things out, conducting interviews, awarding a contract, and then reviewing current data and analyzing what's happened and changed in the community and, and what we'd like to see new or different. So that's just kind of a summary of, of what might be upcoming. And we have done a report that shows you what's happened in the past since 2010. And so really this is just, we, we identified some things that had been discussed before with the zero escaping plant list and having more native plants encouraged with looking at Broadway, with looking at maybe the north Ninth Street corridor. We have a brand new neighborhood revitalization map and that was renewed in, in 2024. There are some things that have been asked that staff look at in terms of updates or things to codes. And it's been a while since we've had a steady session or anything on looking about updates to the bicycle trails, master plan, or, or working closely with our bicycle community. But this is a lot to digest. It's a lot of written words, but it was there kind of just to build a record of what's happened since 2010 and a baseline for exciting opportunities to be involved in developing a new plan for Salina for the next 10 to 15 years. So this is your opportunity to kind of brainstorm, give staff ideas to things that you'd like to see included or, or things from a plan standpoint that you wish had happened since 2010 and hadn't. So at this point, I'd be open for any questions you have about the maps or the background. Mr. Mike Sell's probably your expert in everything that happened in 2010.
We did a lot, didn't we?
But you could see just from the resolution that was adopted, we tried very carefully to try to summarize everything that the, the Planning Commission wanted to see. to try to summarize everything that the Planning Commission wanted to see happen at that time. And so if there's any of the maps you have questions about or would like to look at again, or if there's things that members wanted to share, say that you hope any new plan or updated plan would include, this would be the chance to do that.
Dean, I guess that one of the first questions I have, and you know I've asked for sessions before that included the city government, but how do we, how does this dovetail with the county and their plan? And can you, I haven't followed that closely at all. Could you just give us a little bit of input on that?
Well, I won't, I can't really say that the county has de-emphasized planning, but they have from a degree that currently, and I think we noted that in our report, the planner who works for Saline County is also the Dickinson County planner. And they work three days in Dickinson County and two days here. And so I would say that the level of intercommunication between city and county on planning issues is not real high at this point in time. And so, you know, there have been, in the past, it would be more distant past, but there have been times where there have been joint meetings of the City Planning Commission and the County Commission, County Planning Commission, just to discuss issues of common interest or what you might call edge or fringe issues where the city and county jurisdictions meet up, and sometimes there's not a shared vision. But essentially, what the county did, and it's in the very first map I think Dustin had on the screen, but the county essentially said, "We're going to adopt the exact same land use plan that the city has." So, and so if you go to the county's plan and the city's plan, that map is identical. And essentially, what it means is that the, inside the area that's colored there, the planning needs of the city should take precedence over any type of rural issues. It's not something I touched on very much, and it's, there's been less interaction. We haven't brought an item for quite some time. But we noted in the packet, we have an interlocal agreement with Saline County, and it has two, there's one interlocal agreement, and it says, "If you plat property within a mile of the city limits, it has to be approved by both the city and the county." And so if there's a residential subdivision that's not very large on the east side of Holmes Road, kind of northeast of the Covenant Church, and that subdivision, even though it's still in Saline County, it had to be approved by the City Planning Commission as not being detrimental to the city. And so that agreement is still in place, and so there just haven't been many of those things that have come forward. But it's fairly unusual, but the county agreed to give shared jurisdiction to the city in platting in that area. And anything that's within three miles of the city, we're supposed to be notified and have an opportunity to comment on those. And that's still in place. The other thing is if you're in Saline County and you're doing a commercial project, the city building staff and fire marshal are involved in reviewing those plans, and the city actually reviews and approves the plans for any major commercial building that might take place out in the county. So those are two cooperative agreements that we have in place now.
Are there any other questions of staff or comments?
We didn't know, as we are 15 years in, we hit some things, we missed some things. A lot of the things that the plan called for relating to downtown have come to pass. And I've seen a lot of the plans and things that are happening. I don't think it gets a lot of coverage, but there's quite a few things in the plan for the river renewal. Some of you may or may not know about, but one of them that's, and I think I have my wrath, I think it's correct math, it's the seven bridges concept. So one of the problems that you have when you have a river channel like Smoky Hill River or even creeks, I won't blame Carla for this, but sometimes engineers like to put in culverts and boxes instead of bridges. And so when you're dealing with like creekside or channelside hike bike paths, they work best if you can run the path parallel to the channel underneath the bridge so that people don't have to cross streets. Well, we have a whole range of, a lot of people think that the Iron Street Bridge is a bridge. It's not. It's a big box culvert. It's not a bridge. And so part of the river renewal project is taking, I think by my count, seven box culverts, removing them and replacing them with bridges so that you can have trails that go underneath the street. So ash elm, iron, and Mulberry's kind of a bridge. Walnut, I think, has to be modified. And then over at the midway, which comes in off Ohio Street, and I think the other one may be Ohio Street itself, where it crosses the old channel, with taking culverts out and putting bridges in their place. And so that's going to be one of the first things that happens as part of that river renewal project. So I think that is a really large-scale project that may have a lot of impact on the community.
Okay. You said we'll still have like study sessions and stuff in the future for some of the stuff, or is...
Well, I think for helping to develop the scope of what elements you want to see in the plan, there's some things that weren't emphasized as much as others. There's not as much stuff about environmental things or protecting environmental sensitive areas. There's not much about water conservation or things like that in our comprehensive plan. And so maybe there's things in that regard that Planning Commissioners may want to see as an emphasis in the updated plan. So there'll be steady sessions and scoping sessions to get input on putting together. Because in order to select somebody to help us prepare a future plan, we kind of have to give them parameters of what we want to see and understand if they have the people on their staff that are capable of helping us with those kind of issues. So there'll be future steady sessions to kind of scope those things out.
Okay. And if we have ideas and stuff like that, that you guys are wanting that right now or to help facilitate some of that?
Well, this is just an open general discussion about the current plan, and I think there will be specific times to do that. But if there's something that comes to your mind today that you want to get entered into the minutes or something that you'll hope the new plan will address, then this is just an opportunity to do it. There'll certainly be opportunities down the road.
Okay. I don't have anything right now, just for future, if I come up with something, so.
Speaking of study sessions, I noticed that the city-county had a joint study session regarding the future plans for this building, Memorial Hall and so forth. Is that going to be, is that something we need to consider into our comprehensive plan, master plan, so forth?
There is a very small element of that in the current plan, but I think the future of, I know not this plan, but the plan, the prior plan had a policy, a policy that basically said, "Look downtown first for governmental facilities" and not to have the city or county government building remote facilities in remote locations, but to try to concentrate things in this kind of governmental complex. But they were looking at things like Memorial Hall, which is in bad need of some adaptive reuse. And you have a Saline County jail facility that's over attached to the sheriff's office and police station, which is currently vacant. And then there are some city and county agencies that are in other remote buildings. So that was kind of a space study and looking at those kind of things. But I think that the location of governmental facilities or what happens in this immediate area would be part of that plan. And that, looking at that study and incorporating some of its findings and recommendations, certainly what to do with Memorial Hall is a challenging thing. It's going to require a lot of creative thinking.
I would also note on this, the last document of why do comprehensive plans need to be updated, we kind of highlighted, as Dean stated, the process of going about finding a plan consultant, interviewing and selecting a planned consultant. And then we got into gap analysis, incorporating new information, the SWOT analysis, which is identifying strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. And Commissioner Ferber, to your point about those facilities, I look at that as an opportunity for redevelopment potentially. I mean, it is a challenge exactly what to do, but it also presents a unique opportunity. So I think there will be two points of engagement. There's going to be kind of identifying what are the things that we want to see come from a new plan? And then once we're actually in to the plan process with a consultant, doing other community engagement to kind of further break those things down. So if you identified, say, the downtown as a big thing you wanted to address in your comprehensive plan, then we would discuss that when we were planning an RFP or request for proposal. And then once we had a consultant, part of our process with them would be breaking that further down and gathering more information and doing some more analysis and having some more community engagement. And there will be community engagement on a larger scale, and there could be surveys, there could be community meetings. There will also be engagement with you as the Planning Commission, meeting with you guys, having study sessions, as Dean said. So the study sessions will start before we have a consultant, but they will continue after we have a consultant and kind of going into more finer detail, if that makes sense.
So one of the things that was discussed with me, and then, I mean, we've asked to do some research on, but as the river channel redevelops, and some communities, I know Pueblo, Colorado comes to mind, they have what they call a river overlay district. And so one of the questions is, is you have, you revitalize your river channel, you have walking paths, hiking paths, and people want to locate businesses or locate things near the channel. Some communities require that the development be reoriented so that they have an entrance or a front door or an inviting location on the trail facing the river as opposed to having, just have things back up to the river. So there are things like that that the Planning Commission could be looking at as if the river channel renewal stimulates redevelopment, what form, shape, orientation do you want those things to take? Because if we have a river renewal and then we have some new buildings and they just have blank walls with no entrances facing the hike bike path, that's not as, doesn't generate as much activity as if you have places along the trail that have entrances and are inviting. So those are the kind of things that we would hope to get input from commissioners on.
So I guess I have a kind of a, I was trying to think of ideas and stuff like that for this, but like if we wanted like traffic studies on the streets here in town, obviously, we want the city to grow, and the more people, the busier the streets and stuff get. So by maybe running or doing traffic studies on some of the busier streets, and then we could take that information and turn it into maybe using some of the smaller streets to just kind of offset some traffic or something like that. Is that kind of what's...
Yeah, and I think that gets to scoping and what Gage talked about is, and one of the things I noted in my report, and to me, it was notable, in 1992, the comprehensive plan had a separate transportation plan with that comprehensive plan. And the most recent plan, that was 2010, didn't really have a separate transportation plan. And so it wouldn't, it's probably be almost 10 years ago, but I think I had previously shared with the Planning Commission, I went through the list of all the projects that were identified in the 1992 transportation plan. And there's only one project in that plan that didn't get done, and that was to pave Holmes Road from Magnolia Road to Country Club Road. Everything else, including building a Magnolia Road interchange and a number of things like that that were in that plan, all got done. And so that, you have to understand what traffic volumes are and projected things are to know where to place your emphasis. So if that's something that's important, having a transportation plan element as part of the plan. And so, you know, that's part of looking at the planning consultants and their teams. Some planning consulting firms are really strong in transportation, or they might partner with an engineering firm to do that, or some are not so strong in transportation, so.
Dean, it seems like the, all modes of transportation are interconnected, so the hike bike, the vehicle transportation, maybe we should include that all in one lump and address it that way so that there's interconnectivity between all of those modes.
Yes, I think everybody's become much, and the buzzword is multimodal, but if you look at transportation, it wouldn't just be a street widening or street construction plan, you'd look at all modes of transportation where, and we don't have Mr. Michelson here, but he's working on a committee that they're looking at our highest pedestrian accident intersections and looking at places where pedestrians don't feel safe. And so, you know, studying where you have the most vehicle pedestrian accidents, I would say, and I don't, maybe some of you do it, I would never, as a pedestrian, try to venture across the Magnolia Ninth Street intersection. I think that's not really designed with pedestrians trying to cross it in mind. And so those are kind of the things that would be looked at. If nobody feels safe crossing a particular intersection or a certain area, those are kind of things that the plan is designed to draw out.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions?
So this is not an action item, but it was just an opportunity to share with you the origin of our current plan, what's the origin of our current plan, what's happened since then, and and to kind of build the base for for doing something new. I don't have you shared with them at all, Daisy, your your plan for are we are you going to try to do an electronic voting exercise?
Yes, I touched base with them before the meeting, so we did both verbal and with the software.
So just for your benefit, the planning boards are kind of the pilot project for our new agenda. Software and the City Commission hasn't gone to this yet, and so they're observing to see how it works for you first before making that move. And one thing that hadn't been tried yet is whether electronic voting was something that that seemed viable, so. I don't know. You've got something for them to vote on?
We voted on the minutes.
Okay.
Do you want comments back on that or not later or?
Later would be fine.
Okay.
So you've already had your exercise? Wow, sneaky.
Are these results secure, Daisy?
So that is the only item we had for you. And just under other business, we will have a meeting on the 6th of May. And we have a couple text amendments, one that you initiated where we're looking at our temporary use regulations and how they tie back to our downtown Ace District. And we're looking at our our South Ninth overlay district again. And then south of Dymaroo Steakhouse, there's a plan that will come before the Planning Commission to construct a Valvoline oil change facility on the lot that's between Dymaroo and the Holiday Inn by that entrance there. And so that's a a planned commercial district, so that plan would be reviewed by the Planning Commission. And then on a personal note, I wanted to note that that meeting will be my last Planning Commission meeting for working with this commission. And so I am retiring effective May 16th.
Wow. Well, congratulations.
So my first Planning Commission meeting was in March of 1987. And so I've been working with this group ever since, and it's favorite part of my job. So I think we'll have some treats and some chances to visit and have some refreshments and stuff at that meeting, so.
Okay.
There will also be a retirement celebration separately that we're planning that everyone will be invited to.
Good. You'll let us know when that is.
Something I know nothing about.
It's a surprise.
Well, we'll have we'll have cookies and refreshments for you after that meeting, and then we'll send out more details for the retirement celebration as a whole, so.
Good. Thank you.
That's a big step.
Yes.
Yes.
I haven't said anything publicly till now, so.
Oh, wow.
You're the first to know.
Wow.
You can use our voting software for that and vote on that.
Downvote? I don't know.
Are we supposed to keep that non-public?
No, it's there's a lot of there's a lot of people who know, I've just never said anything myself. And so I'm telling you as a group because, like I said, my favorite part of all my years here is working with the Planning Commission.
Wow. Well, good.
We have enjoyed it as well.
Yes. All right, Dustin, is there anyone online?
We do not have anyone online or in the room for public comment.
All right. Very good. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.